I would like to call on John Moore to lead us with the Pledge of Allegion. Planning Secretary, may we have a roll call, please?
Definitely, Vice Chair Ayala. Commissioner Flores?
Present.
Commissioner Jimenez?
Present.
Commissioner Mora?
Present.
Vice Chair Ayala?
Present.
Perfect. We have a call at four zero.
This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure regarding the site business or experte communications about public hearings. Are there any experte communications? At this time, the general public may address a planning commission on both non-agenda and agenda items. Please be aware that the maximum time allotted for members of the public to speak shall not exceed three minutes per speaker. State law prohibits a planning commission from taking action or entertaining extended discussions on a topic not listed on the agenda. Please show courtesy to others and direct all of your comments to the chairperson.
Here, we don't have any raised hands or... Do you comment on it, Ms. Watson? No, I actually do have a hand now. I'm calling about Mr. Wendell.
Sorry, I'm on mute now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good evening. My name is Stefan Wendell with the Ordinance Company, speaking on behalf of Golden Springs Development and the Ordinance Company and a number of property owners in the city. We appreciate the time. We appreciate the study session. I'm looking forward to listening today more than speaking. City staff is aware that we have some concerns with the proposed language on non-conforming uses and developments. We have made that language available to city staff. At this point, we still have concerns reading the latest draft that was proposed prior to this meeting. But we will look forward to continuing working with staff, continuing to work with the city and look for a mutually acceptable solution. So, thank you.
Mr. Marskey? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Chairman, members of the planning commission. I wasn't quite sure if, how this, how this study session was going to transpire, but after hearing the gentleman who just spoke, I also am here representing the Gabriel Industrial Complex at eight eight four four Millagrove Drive. We did provide some comments during a previous city council meeting, and we have also reviewed staff's work to date and the draft information that's been presented. And we also are very focused on wanting to be contributing to this zoning code update amendment, especially the non-conforming uses, because the subject property is one of those properties that's being brought into compliance with your general plan, which we fully support and understand. And we just want to also continue to be involved in the process. Looking forward to further communications with the departments and providing some more written input and looking forward to being in front of you in November, which we understand that's going to be the time that you may be holding the public hearing on any further activities. So again, just thank you for your time and your consideration and the ability to provide this information. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. So you know the raised hands. Ms. Watson, if you'd like to approach the podium?
I'm Elizabeth Watson, and I'm representing GM Properties, which owns two industrial properties here in the city. They're somewhat interesting in that they have multi-b buildings and multi-unit buildings. So, we have had an opportunity to work with staff on particular concerns relating to those circumstances in the context of the non-conforming situations code. And we continue to have some concerns that I've outlined in an email that was submitted today, since we've had this new information only since the end of last week. These, these properties have been designed and built as industrial properties, and our primary concern is to have these provisions not trigger a piecemeal conversion of property in a way that is infestable. And specifically, there are eight buildings on these two properties, and they have, in one case, thirty-eight units and the other nine. And they serve small mom and pops in the communities or new businesses that are engaging in industrial activities, but they provide space for them to grow and then ultimately maybe even move to bigger space and succeed in their business. But the way the ordinance is written now, we were happy to see in the latest draft that there's a recognition that the site as a whole, for purposes of a non-conforming use, should be the central factor. And our concern again is that certain language seems to create circumstances where an individual building or a unit within an individual building would be converted piecemeal on its own in a way that doesn't work. And specifically, of course, these are fifty years in operations. They're fully built-out sites. And as a consequence, they don't have the ability to provide commercial parking, which is their new zoning, or meet commercial development standards on a piecemeal basis. So what the most recent provision that was added is tied to leases and essentially says if within a building, more than fifty percent of the gross square footage becomes vacant, that at that point, you can only rent to, in our case, commercial users in an industrial building. And so our concern is that instead, the provisions relate to site as a whole rather than individual buildings and individual square footage of this kind that can result in a situation that's untenable, because you've got a project that has all sorts of industrial uses.
Targeted zoning ordinance update, non-conforming situation presentation. Right. Recommendation that the planning commission, that the planning commission received a presentation and provide feedback for incorporation into the final draft, non-conforming situations ordinance, anticipated to be presented to the planning commission at the next regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. I would like to call upon planning consultant Laurel Reimer to present item number one.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Laurel Reimer, planning consultant. I'm here before you tonight to update you on the non-conforming provisions that we've been working on for a number of months. We, as staff, worked collaboratively with MIG, who was our general plan consultant, to draft the non-conforming situations provisions that we will be presenting tonight. For the agenda, we'll be going over just the targeted zoning ordinance update as a whole, which you are very familiar with at this point, going through the non-conforming situations sections of the code, our next steps, and then answer any questions or comments that you may have. The goal for tonight is to hear from you, to hear from the public, to receive final feedback or additional feedback, and we will go, come back to you again with any necessary revisions based off of the feedback that we received tonight. So throughout the targeted zoning ordinance update process, a number of new areas of the zoning code have been presented to you. Very recently, we presented the mixed-use zoning districts, the multiple-family development standards, updated the zoning map and updated the parking standards. So all of these were tied to updates that we had done in the general plan. And in order to have consistency between the general plan and the zoning code, we needed to bring these items or these sections of the zoning ordinance into compliance. One area, a big area that we pulled out, was the non-conforming situations provisions. This section of the ordinance had received extensive interest from the business community and property owners. And so to give it proper timing consideration, we opted to separate that from the larger zoning ordinance update, and that's why it's tailing the other revisions that you had already, that you've already reviewed. We did a number of public-facing interactions in order to update the general plan and then the targeted zoning ordinance update. We had four zoning advisory group meetings starting back in June twenty twenty-two. We did a community workshop in July twenty twenty-two. We met with the affected property owners that were affected from the zoning map changes in August of twenty twenty-two. We did joint workshops. A big one was the business group meeting that specifically focused on the non-conforming situations. That was back in September twenty twenty-two. And we've been going back and forth with the business community since then on various drafts. Our first available draft for the non-conforming situations was made available on July twenty-six, twenty twenty-two. That was posted to the Reimagined Sanofi Springs website and also sent to the zoning advisory group members. A few of those ZAG members are also business owners and part of the Chamber of Commerce, and they collaboratively as a group wanted to meet further to discuss the non-conforming situations. So we also sent it to them on August thirtieth. We received comments from the industrial business group on September fourteenth, worked diligently to update the ordinance or the draft ordinance, send it back out, received comments again in February of this year. The third publicly available draft was sent in August of this year, and then we've received comments in August eighteenth, twenty-third, twenty-eighth, thirtieth, thirty-first, September twenty-first, and we also received comments today from Ms. Watson. So we've been, we're getting closer and closer with each draft. The reason for the draft coming before you this evening is to ensure consistency with the general plan. Specifically, there is a provision in the general plan that said, this is the crux of all of it, says existing legally established land uses or structures that are made non-conforming by this general plan or related zoning amendments may continue operating until a site is redeveloped. However, any material expansion and square footage of a non-conforming building or use shall require a conditional use permit. Repairs and maintenance may be made to keep non-conforming buildings or structures in a safe condition. So everything that we are, will be presenting tonight and the drafts that we've done thus far are with this provision in mind to make sure that we comply with it. The current zoning or the current non-conforming code section that's in our zoning code is quite outdated. Most, the majority of it stems from or is based on the nineteen sixty-four zoning code, and there have been a few revisions since then with specific type of uses. But by and large, it's a nineteen sixty-four zoning or non-conforming uses code section, so it really needed to be updated. The current zoning, non-conforming uses provisions requires a conditional use permit for alterations to non-conforming dwellings and non-conforming uses. They are only allowed to relieve overcrowded or unsafe conditions, and they're, they're not allowed to, you're not allowed to update or increase your square footage to gain additional rent or revenue. And the cost for these additions or alterations is limited to fifty percent of the fair market value of the existing dwelling. And for non-residential uses, the owner must acknowledge that the alterations will not extend the termination time periods, and then we'll go through that in just a moment. A big item as well in the existing code is that repair reconstruction is limited to a hundred and fifty percent of the assessed value of the structure and the damage that has, and this could be, you know, an act of God, an accidental fire, whatever it may be, anything that's not a intentional damage to the, to the structure, repairs must be started within one year of damage. Additionally, the non-conforming use can't change to another non-conforming use, and the majority of our non-conforming uses code currently has termination periods. Some of these termination periods are quite short. One of them is as short as ninety days, and the longest is twenty years. So as it's stated in today's code, a non-conforming structure or non-conforming use at most would have twenty years to enjoy that non-conforming status before it needs to come into compliance with the code. The current code is not too workable for our business community. And so with the general plan update, we did adopt that provision that said that non-conforming uses can remain. So in our first draft, that was back at the end of twenty twenty-three in September when we sent, or August, when it was sent out to the business community, it's a complete rewrite of the non-conforming uses section of the code. The most important thing that we did was to remove the termination dates. So as it is now, a use can remain essentially indefinitely until certain triggers are met. We now allow two years to repair damage instead of one year. There's defined, we've defined what it means when a use is discontinued. We do allow for certain alterations of non-conforming developments without a conditional use permit, and we do allow for certain expansions with the conditional use permit. Whereas the current code, you're really limited to what's there today, and the only improvements you can make is basically for a life safety type, type improvement. And there is a process to expand the non-conforming use again with a conditional use permit. We did receive a number of comments on that first draft, and working with the business community, we did accept, I would say a majority of those comments, a lot of them were adding clarifying language, adding additional, lengthening the definition of what a non-conforming use is or non-conforming structure is. And a, a big item of debate was what the, what percentage a damaged or destroyed building, what trigger does it need to be completely repaired or rather completely rebuilt? The code as written in the first draft was that your costs were limited to seventy-five percent of the appraised value, which we learned was actually quite low, that the appraised value wouldn't cover very much. So we changed that to, or I'm sorry, yeah, changed from the appraised value to the replacement value. In the, again, we received a number of comments back. The third draft, the biggest changes is that we did allow for alterations. Oh, and what I should say as well is in the second draft and in the first draft, we would allow alterations as long as other more public goods were provided. So things like adding landscaping, improving public access to the street, improving public sidewalks, things like that, where they were, the first and second draft would say, you can improve your building, your non-conforming building, if you give us something in return, sort of. That's sort of what it was saying. And there were a number of types of improvements that would be accepted. That was getting a little bit difficult to, to wrap all of our hands or heads around, so we just mixed it entirely. And in the third draft, there's no, I guess tit-for-tat listed in it. There are alterations that are allowed that you can just do. Interior alterations are now allowed without any sort of public benefit. You can improve, you know, the, as long as you're not expanding the floor area of the, the use. We deleted the termination or one of the use terminate, proof of terminated use was a lease termination, and that was also a little difficult for, to track. And so rather than saying a use is deemed terminated when the lease is terminated, that was removed entirely from the third draft. And we also added language about the, an appeal process, where if the city has determined that your use has gone away or that you, that the use of this particular property has terminated, the property owner or the tenant can now have a, an appeal process that they can go through, and so that was clarified. The third draft that, or rather, the fourth draft is what is here before you tonight. The, I guess the biggest changes between the third draft and the fourth draft is that we now have a reference to the non-conforming use provision of the general plan, which is what I had read a few slides previously. So that is now referenced. We clarify that there were some provisions that are actually currently in the code regarding intensifying the use as it pertains to parking and loading facilities. But that was, we could tell it was confusing some, some of our business community members, and we opted to clarify that that is language that's currently in the code that's specifically meant for single-family homes when it relates to a one-car garage and when it triggers requiring a two-car garage, so that's now added in. We also added in provisions for multi-tenant buildings, as Ms. Watson was stating that the current code or the brother, the current, the most previous draft did not include any sort of differentiation for a multi-tenant building versus a single-tenant building. So we built in some provisions for multi-tenant buildings and multi-tenant uses. We also removed requiring a business license as one of the proof of use termination. And we had heard that there have been a few instances where a property is used for hobby storage or personal tech stores. It's not a business operating out of it, and so there's not a business license. And so there was concern that if this unit has a, an operating tenant in it, but that tenant is not a business, then does that mean that that unit is now a non-conforming unit? And so we clarified that you, you don't need a business license as proof that a use has terminated. There's, there's other triggers that can go in. So going through some of the changes that we did accept for the purpose of the chapter, one five five point three eight five F was added, and that's to comply with the non-conforming use provision of the general plan. We, it was suggested that we include the entire general plan language in it, but we wanted to have it just streamlined and reference the general plan without including, not duplicating the language. In one five five point three nine two, this is for non-conforming development. We added additional language, which was suggested from the community, from the public, that a development can be maintained, repaired, improved, but it can also be altered internally, remodeled, and continued, provided that there's no physical expansion in floor area. The original language was physical change in the floor area. And so this now allows a business to work within the confines of their unit space, but they can move stuff around without feeling like they can't move displays or machinery, things like that. In our definition, we also included a, well, we added in that a non-conforming use is not subject to this chapter if it was previously allowed with an entitlement. So if a non-conforming use or non-conforming development, a portion of a building was allowed with a variance, then we've said as a city that we previously allowed this, and so we clarified that if it was previously approved with a variance modification, conditional use permit or development plan approval, then it's not considered a non-conforming use or a non-conforming building, because we, as city already said that it was okay. This, you can't read, but this is the, the section that was causing some confusion. And this is language, the cross-out language was already in our code, and it pertains to, it, it was intended for when a garage is triggered. And so we, we made this clarified that this is specific for developments that have housing. And if a single-family home is increased by sixty percent, that's what triggers them from going from one-car garage to two-car garage or one carport to carport. And we wanted to clarify that that's not intended for commercial or industrial businesses. That, that's just for single-family homes, and that's how we've always practiced or put this section of the code into practice. And so now it's just made more streamlined and clarified for the, our business community. This is a language that we added regarding multi-tenant buildings. And as Ms. Watson pointed out, this, the language here does say multi-tenant buildings with three or more tenant spaces. And our intent is for it just, in all of these non-conforming provisions, it's for a site as a whole to be considered within the, either the non-conforming use or the non-conforming development. And so as it's stated here, rightfully so, it, it's not our intent that for their forty-eight units, I think, give or take, that if one unit in a, in an eight-unit building is, is vacant, that it, it has to come into compliance. It's as a whole. So if you have a building that has five tenant spaces and three are vacant, at that point, the building as a whole needs to comply with the current requirements of the zoning ordinance. But if you have, if you've got a, like in Ms. Watson's case, eight buildings on her property and two units and one of the buildings are vacant, that doesn't mean that just that one building needs to be, you need to have the property as a whole considered. So we will clean this up, because that was not our intent with adding this language. We wanted to, to say that as a whole, you've got fifty percent of the units that need to come into consideration or into conformance. But also at that point, if you've got fifty percent vacancies, you probably will be considering another use for your property anyways. Finally, with the discontinuation of non-conforming uses, we did delete the requirement that a failure to have a business license is, is what the city would use to consider a discontinuation of use. We removed that because of the reasoning from previously explained that there could be instances where there's not a business operating, so they don't need a business license. So we're not going to deem that unit out of compliance. It's just, we're going to use other ways to determine if it's non-compliant, not with a business license. Oh, and then also, this was added additional language to further the appeal process to clarify that a decision on a non-conforming provision or situation would be determined by the director. That can be appealed to the planning commission, and if the planning commission decision can then be appealed to the city council. And this is consistent with some of our other appeal processes. So for our next steps, we're, I'm here to answer any questions that you have, take comments from yourselves, from the public, and we will be taking all of that into consideration and coming back before you with a final draft for your recommendation. This, because it's an ordinance, it needs to go to the city. This, because it's an ordinance, it needs to go to the city council for approval and it would take two readings. So we are, our hope is for November thirteenth to be back before you with a final draft, taking into consideration any revisions that are needed. And at that point, you would make a recommendation to the city council and at the beginning of the year, hopefully, we will have our second reading and then thirty days after that second reading is when the ordinance goes into effect.
Thank you very much for that, Ms. Reimer. Are there any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Flores?
It seems like there's still some work that needs to be done as far as clarifying language in this. Out of the comments that you received, what were the most controversial comments and how are you addressing them?
So most of the comments, well, I, we as staff feel like most of the comments we've been able to address in this most recent draft. And the items that I pulled up on the screen, these are the ones that we've accepted. And actually, in your packet, there should be a chart that it's, has all of the comments we received and then a response to those comments. There were some items that we just as staff don't feel would be good planning practice to accept. There are some, if, you know, some of the comments would just be very permissive to the point where, what's the point of having a non-conforming provision section of your code? If, if you can expand without any sort of control on it. So there were certain items that we did not accept and that is that the details of each of those is included in your packet. But by and large, I would say that the multi-tenant considerations, that was a big one. And so we need to work on that content. We have more work on that. And there were some other language, sure, we can get some comments from, from the business community, but those, I think, were some of the biggest ones, sticking points. But I would say as a whole, from the start to now, the, how the city determines the value of a property when it's damaged or destroyed, that was a really big sticking point. So we did change it from the assessors, the assessed value, what the county assessor has to the replacement value because that's a more fair based on market conditions with actually a property is worth. We also, there was discussion on, at what point is your two years measured from the two years that you have to repair that building? We as staff or the, the current codes is you've got two years to get your permits and start work on it. There was debate over having two years to just submit your permits. And there is a process where if things are taking longer, maybe you've got insurance concerns or whatnot. There, there is language in there that allows the director to have some discretion as long as you've made a good case. But our hope is to avoid situations where maybe a property is damaged and it just kind of hangs in this purgatory of not being redeveloped for a number of years because you've, you've took two years and then submitted for your building permit and then maybe dragged your feet a little longer. We, we want to make sure that if something's damaged, that it's actually being repaired in a, in a proper time.
Any questions? Commissioner Moore?
The brief comment, and this is obviously not a easy undertaking. And, but I'm glad, you know, the scoping things that we've had since two thousand and twenty-two. Watson, you know, your comments, you know, our business community. You know, that's what, what we do. And, you know, and obviously we're not at a point where, you know, we're not going to jeopardize any business here in San Antonio Springs. That's our, you know, our lifeline. We are an industrial city. And so, you know, I just want to commend planning staff and also all the comments and, you know, the, what we're doing with our business community and of course, Chamber. Thank you, Lauren.
And that was a huge concern as, as our, as our code is written now, having twenty years is just, that, that's not a, that's not feasible, especially if we went through this general plan process and you just happen to be a property owner that, in a site that was rezoned. So our goal was for, if you want to continue your business forever and ever, you can, as long as you don't expand it past a certain point. Or your use doesn't change from a non-conforming use to another not, to a non-similar, non-conforming use. And that's something I should add too, is there was concern about can a use change? Does it have to say, let's say, you're a shoe manufacturer? Can you only then sell your business or your building to another shoe manufacturer? The language as it is states now is it needs to be a similar use. So it could be a shoe manufacturer to beach ball manufacturer. I don't know, some, something that's similar enough. It doesn't have to be the same exact use. But let's say you wanted to shoe manufacturing to metal forging, that, that, those are dissimilar and that, that would not be a use that you could change to. Or you could opt for shifting the use of that property to a conforming use or whatever the zone is that you're in now.
And that was one of my questions I had last, now that I'm thinking back, it was one because I think someone here, a business owner, was concerned about selling his, his business or his property later, you know, if it was going to be a struggle.
Right. And, and if I remember correctly, that property had gone from an M-two designation to an M-one designation. And we're not touching through this, this update. We have not touched the uses, the permitted or conditional uses within the M, the manufacturing zones or the commercial zones. So that while the, the whole list of possible uses allowed on that property going from M-two to M-one is now shorter, frankly, it is. There's still a lot of uses within that, within the M-one designation that are permitted by right.
Yes, a lot of information that's been presented. Thank you, Laurel, and a lot of questions. But we would still like to give the public an opportunity to provide any more comments because it's important. We have to go back, consider the comments, see how we can accommodate them or even whether we can accommodate them. Do they make good planning sense or not? But the goal is obviously to work with everyone and try to come to a resolution. Now, I'm not saying that we'll always see eye to eye on something. And as Laurel mentioned, there are some things that we just couldn't agree upon. But for the most part, we did look at the comments and took them into consideration and incorporate them into this new presentation. But again, if there are any further comments, we would certainly like to take those into consideration so that we could have a written record because we're getting to the final line, so to speak. And we would like to be able to accommodate as many people as, as possible.
Any comments to respond? Anyone raise hands?
Anyone in the audience who needs to comment one more time? I know there's only two of you, but still.
And Elizabeth Watson. And I did want to indicate that staff has worked with us on this and we appreciate that. And again, the concept from our standpoint is looking at the site as a whole, which again, that term was actually added in this last draft. So I think by working together, there will be a way to look at the, the provisions with that in mind and coordinate with staff and appreciate the fact that the city is really revamping these provisions to update them in a way that's very favorable for the community and the business community from that standpoint. But in terms of what's put on the table now, just want to have it in the best shape possible so that in the future, issues don't come up. And, you know, the piecemeal one for individual space was a particular concern. And, and again, appreciate staff's response to that and the opportunity to participate. So thank you.
Okay. So having no further.
I, my apologies. Mr. Wondell would like to speak again.
Yes, hi, Stefan Wondell again, representing Orden Golden Springs and the business group referenced earlier. Listen, we appreciate the, the update today. As I said earlier, my goal today was primarily to listen in and really appreciate Director Morel's offer to continue to work with us. And so we'll, we'll be in touch shortly, but thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, having no further questions, I would like to thank planning consultant Laurel Reimer for the presentation. And at this point, I would like to adjourn this meeting at five forty-seven.